Good evening. I'm so glad that you all are here and you have this lovely space. I want to start by thanking Dave Gibson, who is the pastor of Tower Go Church. He's back there. He's a busy man and he made time for us this evening and allowed us this space to have a wonderful conversation and discussion. My name is Kim McGrath. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dave. My name is Kim McGrath. I live in the Shaw neighborhood, have her many years. In addition to serving on different committees and organizations, I'm an executive or rather a board member of the Shaw Neighborhood Ownership Model. So, the Shaw NAM is a citizen-led, neighborhood outreach organization. And we're dedicated to crime reduction through public safety promotion and best practices. In coordination with the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department, the Circuit Attorney's Office, and other neighborhood organizations, the Shaw NAM volunteers are committed to reducing the ripple effect of crime and improving the quality of life in Shaw and the surrounding neighborhoods. As an executive board member, I also work in victim support particularly and have gone through different trainings that are available through the Circuit Attorney's Office. So, this evening, we are here because it's a great opportunity, in collaboration with the Tower Go Heights NAM, the Tower Go East NAM, Benton Park West Neighborhood Association, and Princeton Heights Neighborhood Association, we are presenting an evening with our Circuit Attorney, Ms. Kimberly Gardner. It is very, very good to see you all here, as her office plays a critical role in law enforcement and accountability by acting as citizens' representative for criminal prosecutions. So, we are very, very honored this evening to have her here with us and very excited to see so many people. What this evening is, for the organizations that are presenting, is an opportunity to hear about Ms. Gardner's role, about her current projects and initiatives, and an opportunity to ask questions and have a dialogue about crime and safety in and around St. Louis. So, thank you all very much for attending. Thanks to Dave for hosting. We do have signing sheets. I'll mention this at the end as well, so that we can follow up with each and every one of you following this conversation. But again, thanks to all of you and thank you so very much, Ms. Gardner, for coming to speak with us this evening.
First of all, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Just want to say thank you to the organization, Shaw Neighborhood, and everyone who put this together. I think this is very important. What I've been doing since I took office, about two and a half years ago, I looked at how, inside our office, what are we doing and how to make our city safer. The role of the prosecutor is about public safety and harm reduction, and that's the role and the model we follow in the Circuit Attorney's Office. So, that's why I partnered with Vera Institute, which, basically, I let them come into our organization and say, "What are we doing? How is this office working? How do we utilize data?" Because data is very important. And, basically, they were able to come in, they've been with us for over a year and a half, and it allows us to utilize data to make better decisions. How do we make us safe? How do we reduce the long-term term harm to our communities? The devastating harm that we see, that we hear about, time in and time out. So, what we've done in the city, we take a snapshot. St. Louis City has, actually, we prosecuted a lot of people. We've arrested a lot of people. When you look at the other 114 counties represented around the state of Missouri, we send more people to prison than any other jurisdiction. Now, you guys may say, "Oh, I don't think so," based on the crime, based on the things that we hear and that we see, but actually, that is the true statistics. You're number one in sending people to prison for longer periods of time. But, I ask you, have we made our city safer? It's time for us to stop looking in the past, looking back to the future, at our flawed criminal justice approaches that we've taken. This tough-on-crime approach that has, what I'm saying is, made our city less safe. Since I've been in the city of St. Louis all my life, I want to know, whenever we've been the safest city in this country?
Never.
Or, I mean, tell me, when has it been a period of time that we've been the safest city?
Never.
So, what I did from day one is to, one, have someone come in to tell us what are we doing in our jurisdiction, as well as look to other jurisdictions around this country, how they address violent crime in their cities. So, going to New York, going to California, going to different places that have reduced crime, but also pushed a reform agenda. And so, what I want to do is implement how we make our city safe and how we approach this public reduction of harm by looking at a public safety model, by focusing my resources and your resources on crime drivers that make our community less safe. So, what we're doing is, we're focusing our resources on serious and violent crime. So, that's what, I took this data from Vera and I said, "Well, let's look at spreading our crime strategies." What that does is, that gives us intel, working with police, working with the ICU unit, to develop intel on those crime drivers so we can have focused prosecutions. That's what we're doing. We're working well and partnering with the Feds, how we look at being strategic and focusing on those crime drivers, while that's important is because we reduce harm and we focus on those individuals that are driving crime. We also have a 3PI program, which, working with the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department, we're using that to address non-fatal shootings. Those are those assaults that most are unsolved, as well as some murder cases. But, in those non-fatal shootings, what we found is that we're deploying a prosecutor, deploying a victim service advocate at the time of the incident, not when the case comes in, so we can help that victim, one, go through the process of being, participating in us prosecuting that individual who shot that person or a witness. So, we're looking at how we reduce crime overall by deploying our strategies more efficient and effective, by focusing on crime drivers. Also, what Vera told us that we need to do is upgrade our infrastructure. I mean, we are a prosecutor's office, and most prosecutors' offices, regardless of whether you're in New York, well, I'm saying, New York and some areas are the exception, we have dying infrastructure. Our infrastructure is in the seventies. So, we had to upgrade our infrastructure so we can make sure we can be a more efficient and effective office. We can streamline our processes and make it easier for police to present cases, as well as witnesses and victims, as well as the community. So, we're going to work toward making our office paperless, and that's our goal. But we also want to use this upgrade to make sure that we are keeping up with the trend that criminal activity is becoming more up-to-date with technology, because those are also areas where crime is being committed on these platforms that we have to catch up with, the police, as well as our office. We don't want to be left behind. So, by looking at crime and a harm reduction, by product, we want to look at how crime is a public health crisis. And to address crime from the root causes of why individuals go into the criminal justice system, we have to look at this public health model. Why I implemented these things is because crime happens on a continuum. We have the crime drivers on one hand, and we have the low-level non-violent offenders on the other hand, and we have a lot of gray area. But, we cannot utilize one tool of incarcerating and arresting everyone heavily, because, one, that makes nonviolent offenders go further in the system, but at the same time, takes away resources from focusing on those violent individuals. We're not talking about the violent crime drivers, the murders, the rapes, and robberies. And this is not saying that nonviolent crime is not important. It is, because it affects our quality of life. But what it's saying is, we have to be smart on crime. We just cannot continue to be tough on crime. That's why I looked at making low-level offenders accountable. So, I created a system to really reduce harm to them by, one, we created diversion programs. Our diversion programs are prosecutor-led diversion programs. They're not court-run programs. These are diversion programs that are run by the prosecutor's office. So, we have Mr. and Mrs. redirect programs. We have felony redirect programs. We have youthful offender programs. Those are the 17 and 25 age groups that fall into that range where their brain is still developing, and we know they make bad decisions. So, we're trying to get those individuals that are introduced into crime, but can go further. So, we're trying to cut them off and stop them before they become a victim of crime, as well as be a more perpetrator of crime, to commit more violent types of incidents. So, that's what we're doing. We have a first-ever drug class in this city, or in this state, run by the prosecutor's office, led by addiction physician specialists. And they teach classes to offenders in our office, so we can give them the ability to address the addiction crisis, as well as the opioid crisis, and give them education in narcine. And we go to, we also work with the drug courts, which is important, but not everyone needs treatment. So, it's to triage individuals appropriately and give them that intervention that is needed by an educational class, as well as tools to prevent that next opioid crisis death. We also bring job employment inside our office. We have a SLATE program inside our office, because we want to hook up not just our diversion participants, but every person affected by the criminal justice system with a job, because that's also what fuels crime. When we look at crime, and I say "public health crisis," what you have to think of, crime, basically, is fueled by the lack of systems that have worked. So, you have a lack of education, you have a lack of social services, mental health systems, the lack of employment opportunities, and then, we're like a nursery room. Everything is dumped on the criminal justice system to deal with it. And I'm going to ask you, is locking everybody up a solution?
Is 17 the year to start, too? I mean, if we're going to be proactive, then isn't it like elementary school education before they even get into this system?
And I support that. I'm about to talk about that, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, when we look at that, also, we have a diversion program to be proactive. So, before I get to Debbie's, and she's talking about, we have restorative justice pieces, and all of our diversion programs, they're victim-driven. So, we have victim participation wherever way they want. They pay it back 100% restitution. This is no part-time restitution payment to the victim. We make the victim whole. In our programs, we screen over 600 participants, over 86% success rate. Right now, we have less than, the recidivism rate is but less than 5.5% right now, and we're still continuing to watch those participants, and they have not come back. But at the same time, we make sure we want to be proactive of crime, because we're not just here when something happens. So, that's why we have community diversion centers, that we're piloting with the St. Louis Public School, under the leadership of Dr. Adams. We're in grade schools, we're in Wallbridge, we're in Yakin, we're in Carnegie. And what we're doing is, like you know, Lady said, is we have to address violent crime and victimization of crime earlier, because we're trying to break that cycle of victimization. You're a victim today, and a defendant tomorrow, and vice versa, and the cycle just continues back and forth, back and forth. So, what we're doing is, we're going to address that school-to-prison pipeline. We're going before the juvenile system. And each and every one of you guys know, we're not over the juvenile system. The prosecutor's office is only over the adult system. The courts are over the juvenile system. So, that's why, when I talk about young offenders, that 17 and 25, that's the age range we start, but we're actually starting earlier in these schools, because we want to give these kids the tools to be successful, so we can address the cycle of hopelessness. And where it starts is when they come to school and they miss school days, when it comes to the suspension, it comes to, you know, having problems in the schools and the families. So, we put these diversion centers in there, and we have mentors to give these kids hope where there's a hopelessness that is fueling the criminal justice system. And we see it young in third grade. We see young kids talking about that they don't have any positive role models in these areas. But what we're doing, we're not coming as a prosecutor's office. We're coming, and I'm providing support and mentors who have gone through the criminal justice system to be that mentor, to say, "You don't want to go there. You don't want to touch that fire. You don't want to go and start doing this criminal activity," because we see that these young people are starting in third and first grade. So, we're starting early. We're also starting with girls, because girls are also more likely to go to prison now, and that's the growing prison population in the state of Missouri. And so, we have to address that. And so, that's why it's important, because we want to build trust in the community, not just from a prosecutor's standpoint, but actually understand and be that support to say, "Look, you can do things a different way." So, we're bringing counselors to the public schools, working with our office. We actually have mentors on and going every week, trying to be a mentor to young kids and give them that hope. We're talking to families, trying to understand what are the needs to assess, how we need to help that whole family, because you have a kid, but then you have the family stability around them falling, and that affects whether they're going to behave in school, whether they're going to go further in the criminal justice system. So, that's what we're doing. So, that's why we brought therapists. That's why we had conscious behavior therapy. That's why we have trauma-informed counseling within our office, because we want to make sure we deliver services, not waiting, but we deliberate and deploy right away. We also looked at how the pre-trial and bail issues, we have Vera, who's a leader in this. We looked at our data, and so, we want to make sure that people are not healed simply because they cannot afford to pay. But actually, we have to look at how we balance the public safety, as well as the ability to come back to court. So, we're working with Vera and our data, so we're issuing summonses on low-level felonies. We're actually working with the public defenders to agree on harm reductions that are not a public safety risk. We're working with the community in terms of how we hold individuals accountable by doing community service out of the community, with the help of people like yourself. Hopefully, Mr. Kati will talk more about that later on. And we're looking at how we restructure our victim services again, in a different way. We know there's trauma associated with a crime, and we know that, like I said, this cycle of victimization starts with being a victim, and then, this cycle deteriorates that experience for that individual and that family. So, our victim services is no longer just being a referral system. We're actually bringing therapists inside our office for those victims and addressing, we're giving witnesses services, because under our statutes and under our grants, we can't give witnesses the services needed to make sure they're whole with this critical experience, as well as traumatic events. So, we're bringing therapists inside our office to address victim services. We're also strengthening our victim and witness protection program. We want all of you guys to help us strengthen that, because we need resources to help relocate individuals who are afraid of retaliation, which we have in our city. At the same time, we're concerned with making sure that we can give them services to even move their family for a temporary period of time. That's a big issue in our city, why victims won't go forward, or they won't continue on with the case. So, we're addressing, you know, criminal behavior in many different ways, and at the same time, we are strengthening our outreach to victims and the communities, and it's that harm reduction, public safety approach. And this is supported by the North, the Central Quarter, the South, all over this city, because it's about reducing harm. It's about making our city safe. So, I ask you, I want you guys to start thinking, how do we make our city safe? And we have to do more than just arresting and prosecuting. We have to do more than that, because we've arrested and we prosecuted very great, and at the same time, we've made our city less safe. So, we have to address how we can hold people accountable, but at the same time, prevent And one last thing I want to address, I'm just going to tell you, I know this is probably one of the questions you're going to ask me. I know many of you heard that I don't like the police. Well, that's definitely not true. I work every day with the police department. I support the public safety director, Ginny Edwards. I support Chief Hay. But, as you know, as a prosecutor and as law enforcement, we're going to have these conversations and situations where we're going to disagree. But we have agreed that we're going to work well together regardless of our disagreements. And at the same time, I want to thank the men and women who come every day and works with my office for thousands of cases that we deal with on a day-in and day-out basis, because that's what we need to focus on. These outliers of incidents that we disagree on, those are for the media to promote, but I want to thank the hard-working men and women who are in my office, that continue to do their job every day without fanfare, without accolades, and actually without pay. And so, I just want to thank them and police officers who want to make us safe. But at the same time, I will not support the rhetoric from Mr. Rota and the St. Louis Police Officers Association, who wants to be divisive and to put rhetoric out there in the community that is divisive, that actually makes the community, as well as police officers, less safe. We have to be about change and making our city whole, but at the same time, I'm not going to allow an entity that is biased to attack the good work of the office, as well as the character of me as a circuit attorney. Now, the people elected me, and the people have an own account, and I'm going to do my job, and I'm going to hold accountable the criminal justice reforms that we're pushing forward that makes us safe, which has been effective. And you can hear the police chief, "Crime is going down." So, I will not continue to speak on the rhetoric or the misinformation and the illogical divisiveness of organizations that simply advocates for a bargaining position. And so, I want you guys to understand that the police and I work good every day. I support the police officers, many police officers support the changes I'm making, because at the same time, we got to do something different. The definition of insanity is trying the same thing and expecting a different result. We've had 100 years of the same thing. And so, I'm not going to be beholden to the status quo tacticians that choose and continue to call balls and strikes and individual circumstances and individual cases, when we're talking about thousands of cases, thousands of lives that we deal with every day. So, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak to you, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gardner. And it looks like we've already had a couple of questions kind of coming through. So, what we're going to do for this section is, we're going to do our best to get everybody's questions. I'll ask that you ask honest questions, important questions, relevant questions, but also be respectful of civil dialogue, and of course, our host here, who's leading us into this space. So, we've got a lot. We're going to back and forth. Ryan and I are going to kind of take questions from the group, so we'll start here with this man right here.
Thank you. My name is Walt Boyes. I live over on Shenandoah, about five blocks from here. Everything that you have said about fixing the root causes of problems is absolutely necessary. We have to do that, and I, for one, will be happy to spend more tax money and pay more taxes to be able to do this. But in the meantime, in the last 45 days, I've had license plates taken off two of my cars, I've had a shooting in the alley behind my house. This is right over here on Shenandoah. It's not a bad neighborhood. I've had my car plugged with lead during a high-speed gun battle, and it took me two weeks to get the police to even come and get the bullet that I dug out of the backseat of my car. So, one of the things, one or another thing is happening here. And what I would like to know is, while we are doing all the things that we know we need to do, and that is going to backfill, and 20 years from now, we are going to have a much better, educated, much happier, much better St. Louis. What are we going to do now to keep me from getting shot at?
I appreciate that. Well, that's a very complex question, and I'm going to tell you, the first thing, you know, when you talk about policing, how we police, I think that's an issue for the police chief. And so, I'm not going to tell them how they need to police, but what we need to do is, like I said, is we have to focus on those crime drivers, those incidents, like criminal incidents like you're talking about, so we can focus the police resources to address that shooting, to address those issues like that. And I think that that is what I'm talking about, working with the police, so we can be strategic to focus our attention on those things that you're talking about. But at the same time, to do that, what I need you to do is to have these conversations with the police chief, because what happens is, we have 1,290 police officers in the city of St. Louis. 1,290. We have less than 300,000 people in this population. So, let's look at how we can better strategically police the issues you're talking about, because right now, what we're doing is just policing everything. And I think the chief is doing a good job in terms of focusing on certain areas, so we can talk about how he can focus on some areas like that. So, I'd be willing to talk to you and get that information, as well as talk to the chief about that. So, I think that's important.
Just a quick follow-up. I'm the block captain for that part of Shenandoah, and I've reported this through Officer Whitaker, who is our contact with the Neighborhood Association and everything else, and I didn't hear, I didn't get any feedback. I know this doesn't mean that nothing, that nothing got done, but I didn't hear back. I didn't get any feedback.
Well, what we got to do is have you speak to Mr. Kati with the information, and we'll check on it, to make sure we can get you to feedback. Okay? Thank you.
Next question over here.
My name's John Nagy. I live in Jefferson County, Missouri, and I got a question. Are the laws different in the city than the county? Okay, I'm a 55-year-old guy that got shot in a Bevo Mill, February 2nd, by the guys on ATBs and the dirt bikes. And Michael Griffin, the prosecutor, I went and seen, they have four cameras down there, and the whole crime is on film. He said that if it would have been in a county, it would have been a slam dunk case. He said there was nothing he could do about it. I got it all right here.
Well, I'm going to ask him to talk to you about that, but that's, I can't really speak to individual cases. We can talk to you all darned about that, so...
Well, I've been trying to call him for a month, and nobody returns my calls.
Well, they need to talk to me, and we'll talk to you back.
I'm $45,000 in the hole, because my truck got totaled, I got pelted with 10 bullets, shot in the arm. My daughter, if she, I just dropped her off five minutes before that, or she would have been dead.
Well, let's talk about that, and we can talk...
And the guy came in and said, claimed self-defense, and it's all on film, and nobody wants to look at my case. And I work in the city, I spend a lot of time in the city, but now, I don't even want to come to the city.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not going to talk about your individual circumstance right now.
That's what I've been hearing for two months.
We'll talk to you, but I want to say, you know, we have staying around on to make it difficult in certain cases. I haven't looked at your individual case, but I will...
Can you promise me right now that you will look at my video? They won't release it to the news. They said right here, "It's cases closed," but the news tried to get the video footage, and they said it's still open. So, is it taken under advisement on the shelf?
I would do, and I'll look at your case.
Michael Griffin.
I'll look at your case.
Okay. Thank you, sir, very much for sharing your story. We're going to go ahead and move on, because we've got a lot of questions here, so...
Hello, my name's Miriam Fox. First question is, why do you think that females are, there's more girls that are starting to do more crimes, that you said? That was my question. And then, the other question is, when they look across the board of people that are in prison, the number-one thing that they have in common is that they didn't feel like they had a dad raising them. And so, what can be boosted as far as encouraging families and dads to be a part of, you know, the children? You know, children obviously that grow up, and so that there's less burden on our systems and our programs?
That's a complex question.
It is, it is.
But what you're talking about is how we reduce harm. Why I say that the female population is wrong, because they're more likely to go into the system, a system that is really catered and actually tailored for men, and they're treated more harshly in terms of citizenship, because when they get involved in the system, it's usually on drugs or financial crime, and at that point, they're the head of household. So, they're more likely to go into the system, go to prison, but what happens is, that whole family starts deteriorating. So, we have to address that rising population of women for financial crimes, as well as addiction issues. So, that's why we have a diversion approach and work with the drug courts also, and we want to make sure we're just not putting individuals in the criminal justice system, because people come out who are addicted out of prison. Second of all, you talk about the family structure. I mean, we need to look at how we can address, you know, we can't cure people who don't have fathers in their life. What we can do is give them hope and have mentors and have a strong support and presence to give that young person, or that young woman, or young man, an opportunity to say that there's hope and there's another way of doing things, and another way they can proceed regardless of their situation. So, that's why we're starting to be proactive, to be out in the community, as well as to catch them earlier. And when we catch them earlier, we start building relationships with their family. We know that that mother's addicted, so we can help get her resources to address that addiction. We look at, see if their father or person who acts like a father, grandfather, grandmother, a job, so they can take care of that young person. We actually look at what are the needs of that young person. A lot of our teenage populations are homeless. They're circling couch to couch. So, we need to address how we give those young people a stable environment and a place to live, because we have a lot of homeless teenagers we're not talking about, and that also fuels crime. We deal with that. In our programs, we have to address lack of resources, lack of food insecurity. You know, we want to make sure we can provide food for these young people, as well as these families. There's a lot of food insecurity in our communities. But, it takes a holistic approach. It takes an approach that we work with the community, because we have many layers of issues that we have to address. because we have many layers of issues that we have to address. But that is not sacrificing from violent criminals, that's not sacrificing from issues that are crime drivers that are plaguing our community. We're not sacrificing working with these young individuals. But at the same time, people are more likely to start giving us information because we care about them, we care about their situation, so when something's about to happen, we can take that information and prevent that murder, prevent that car being stolen. We can get to it before, you know, that incident takes place. And that's why we have individuals in the community like that who are not, you know, a prosecutor all the time, they're actually community members, and we wanna continue to strengthen that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I support you and respect you.
Thank you.
Now, having said that, having said that, I've worked in the community for some time with the Gateway Regional Crime Committee, with Chief Orman and Mr. Gregory, Marjorie Hollins and that bunch. So this thing on crime is a big elephant. It's huge. Somewhere, conflict resolution and rites of passage has to go into the heart of every city in America. Now, that's what I believe on that. Now, my question is, what do you have in place to get a handle on the carjackings and the home invasions? Now, 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 I, the sentences may be too lenient. I don't know, I want your thoughts about that, because they might even second-guessing, you know, they're just hopping in cars and just taking folks' cars. Maybe you oughta cut off a finger or something, maybe that'll stop that.
Prosecuting offices, whether it be Mr. Bell's office, Mr. Gibbons' office in Madison County, Illinois, Mr. Gimmick's office in St. Clair, because it would seem that St. Louis would be a hu- St. Louis City at least would be a hub for a lot of criminal activity coming from St. Louis County, Jefferson County, St. Charles, the metro east. When you have so many different populations kind of coming in on your office possibly, what does your office do in terms of kicking out cases? Because I know personally that the prosecutor in Madison County is super hard on drugs and drug-related offenses. So if I'm someone that's looking, if I have a drug problem, if I'm a criminal that's on drugs, I'm gonna come to St. Louis to do my offenses because I'm gonna get a weaker sentence. I'm gonna get someone who may not prosecute me as hard as the counties in our neighboring communities. So do you guys look at that when you talk about prosecuting certain crimes or certain types of crimes? Because we are getting, you know, our neighbors from northeast, southwest coming to St. Louis and doing a lot of the crimes because they are expecting a slap on the wrist.
Well, I think that, like I said, I think we have to look at reform and we have to look at what reform is talking about. Reform is not saying we're not holding drug offenders accountable. What I made a policy is that we look at possession of marijuana cases, 100 grams or less. We're choosing not to issue those cases on single-charge possession cases. If you're selling, we're still issuing those cases. If you're a repeat drug offender, we're still issuing those cases. So I think you have to think, we're not getting rid of every drug case. We're looking at that individual and whether that low-level possession of marijuana, when we have legislation going forward that's going to legalize marijuana. So I want the community to actually start to think that marijuana is gonna potentially be legalized, not right away, but soon. So as prosecutors, we can no longer use that possession of marijuana charge, which, by the way, most cases are gonna get probation anyway. And you're gonna get probation on a drug case in this jurisdiction four or five times. So how about really address the issue of addiction? That's not holding anybody a slap on the hand. Actually, that's holding that person accountable. Because no longer can you just go to a class and then that's it. You have to actually go to a repeated class, get the services you need. We do an assessment on that person. If they need treatment, they get further in-house treatment in terms of that critical treatment they need for drug court, which is a longer-term treatment. And by the way, when we talk about different jurisdictions, crime that happens in my jurisdiction, whether they're from Illinois or county, we have to charge in the city. So we talk to other prosecutors in terms of if that person has a case in Illinois or if that person has another case in the county. But in terms of that person coming from Illinois or coming from the county and committing a crime in the city, we are the jurisdiction that handles that case. But we do talk to other prosecutors about some of the things we're doing. But a lot of the drug problems come from, you know, we don't have a prescription drug monitoring program law in our state. So we have to look at some of these issues of policies that our state are promoting. A lot of the drug users we're seeing are actually legalized drugs that people are stealing prescriptions out of their own family members' cabinets and utilizing those pills. And then they're driving around, running into cars here. So we have to address it. And simply, I'm just gonna tell you, evidence-based practice does not support locking everybody up because, one, that person's gonna get out. Two, you have more drugs in jails and in prisons than you have out here on the streets. And so we have to be honest when we talk about reforms. This is not a slap on the hand. We're actually, most people don't wanna go into the diversion programs I created because it's about harm reduction and public safety. And you cannot have another, commit another crime while you're in my program and you think you're gonna just get a slap on the wrist. It's about accountability and it's about transparency and it's about doing things differently, making us safe. Because if you're a drug user, if you go right to prison, you think all of a sudden you're gonna say, "I'm gonna get clean from going to prison right away"? You're gonna learn from other drug users to be a more better criminal as well as drug user. So we have to use prison. And I'm not saying we don't send people to prison, because we do. You heard, our jurisdiction sends more people to prison than any other jurisdiction. So we have to look at, and I'm glad you're saying this, because we have to think, what is crime reduction and public safety harm reduction model? We have to keep thinking about that. And we can't continue to have balls and strikes. Because we have to also look at the policies in our state. Our state has the most lax gun laws in the country. When we talk about why we have more gun deaths, anybody can have access to guns. We just heard the legislator say they want someone to be able to carry guns on college campuses. And you talk about guns and violence and you think the prosecutor doesn't wanna prosecute these individuals? We basically gave everyone the right to have a gun. We're a permitless state. So you've taken the tools away from prosecutors. You've taken the tool, and I'm not saying you specifically, the legislator, has taken the tools from the police. So when we have issues of shootings and somebody can eject a self-defense claim in these issues, declaw these issues, it makes us difficult to hold that individual accountable. And that's not saying that we don't think that person shouldn't be held accountable. But those are the complexities of a case-by-case situation that we deal with, that when we make these policies that affect public safety, it makes us less safe. I'm the only prosecutor who was a former legislator who stood up on the House floor. I begged my colleagues on the Republican side and the Democratic side, "Why are we doing this? You're gonna cause our communities to experience more violent crime, which we have. We're gonna make police officers less safe, which we have. We're gonna cause problems in our community." And so we have to actually not just say, "Well, why can't we do this"? You need to look at the policies in which drive the reason behind why we can't do this and go advocate. Because they need, the legislators need to hear all of you. Because when I was up there by myself, and I'm not blaming any of you guys for that, I'm just saying the advocacy needs to hold me accountable. But at the same time, let's hold the legislators accountable from both sides of the aisle, not just the Democrats, because we're a Democratic area predominantly. But the Republicans think more guns make us safe. And I would say, it has not. Being a stand-your-ground state has not made us safe.
All right, we've got four questions on this side already lined up, so we're gonna take them one at a time.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner, for coming. Just wanna say, I'm over 60 years old, been in St. Louis many years. I'm a retired firefighter. And with me saying that, within my time of being retired and while I was on the fire department, I've been volunteering. With that, I'm involved with three mentoring programs. So I see firsthand, face-to-face, touching, having conversation with young men, and some of them are women, about the trauma there in their lives. The trauma is real. These are 14-year-olds, 15-year-olds who are doing things that 18-year-olds probably did because they hang out with 16 and older ones, just as I did. When I was a young man, I hung out with the older guys. That's just what we did. We learned a lot of good things, some things you chose not to do. I would say this, that if you can take some time and volunteer, please do that, because it does make a difference. These young men, they don't understand what trust is. They don't know who to trust. When you turn the news on, you don't know who to trust. You see grown men and women lying to the country, to the people. So we expect them to put all that together and trust us and trust each other in a crazy world we have today. Look at the culture that we have. We have a culture that has billboards with alcohol, smoking cigarettes, and that's supposed to be cool. No, it hurts. We have a culture that is really going in the bottom. But I would like to offer me and my other groups to assist you in being proactive instead of reactive. Proactive, pro-action on the fire department, prevention helped a lot. And I take that same concept into things that I do today. So we would like to offer you, some of the members are here today. So who would I contact to give that information? Ms. Gardner, who would I contact?
Mr. Khatib Wahid.
I'm sorry, did you?
Director of Community Engagement.
Okay, that's, I just wanna offer that.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Some of us who are here tonight are members of neighborhood organizations or neighborhood ownership models. And I'm wondering how your office differentiates what was done before with the NAMs under, say, Jennifer Joyce, how you've changed it, what kind of support that you give? And if you could just talk a little bit about that, I'd appreciate knowing.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Well, working with the neighborhood ownership model, that's been key with Jennifer Joyce. And we still have Rachel Smith, who was instrumental part of creating those programs. And what we want to work with Mr. Khatib Wahid, like I said, is really addressing outreach, not just from that case management or that case or that incident that happens that you guys advocate just in the courts. But at the same time, we want to, when I'm talking about being proactive, I want the community members to really be proactive and let's go and reduce crime by, one, being a part of a restorative justice model. We want you guys to participate with our diversion participants or participants that are affected by the criminal justice system, to be that support as well as accountability. So we wanna work with Mr. Khatib Wahid to really talk about accountability and strengthening those neighborhood ownership models that what I've seen are not instituted around the whole city. We wanna make a network where we're not just where you advocate differently in South City versus North City. We want to encompass all of our whole city and start having more engagement with our office, coming into our office and having meetings. We wanna have more meetings where, instead of you just going, looking at that specific case that happened, your incident, the incident, but actually talk to us about some of the things we're doing and be a mentor to a young person who more likely will be affected by violent crime as well as go further in the criminal justice system. Work with us to strengthen our victim services and outreach. Victims don't wanna participate because they're afraid. So sometimes we need community members not to judge, but to support, to be their support, to make them feel a part of the community. Because sometimes when we deal with witnesses and victims, they don't want to be a part of organizations they feel like don't understand the issues. And I'm not saying that's not true with the NAM. So we really want to help keep the existing NAMs as well as strengthen it with the proactive approach to have community diversion centers within each of these areas. So we wanna make sure that we can address that young person that's a problem in the community, not just from when that person has a case, but actually come before the community to have that restorative justice piece so they can stay out of crime. What we've done is look at other models in New York. And they have a community center around their areas that reduce crime that the participants in the community run. And they work with the office to hold individuals accountable. And it's more effective to reducing violent crime as well as incidents that we all talk about. It's engaging with not just the Shaw neighborhood, but actually the 21st Ward, you know, the Second Ward, and really having these conversations of criminal justice reform and participating. But at the same time, we need to look at, beyond just a case, it's addressing these issues of these young people. I mean, we have people who are insecure, food insecure. We need help. We need help from the community to help us find solutions that I can send a young person in the neighborhood to do that community service. Having that participation from the community, so they can become an active member of the community. And at the same time, learn what committing a crime in the community does to the whole community. So it's the holistic approach that I think is a little bit different than what Jennifer Joyce was about. She was more about the case management of an individual case that happens in the area. And I think that's important, and I'm not saying we're not gonna do that. But it's actually the proactive approach of preventing crime and to have these conversations, these tough conversations, and including all of us within the NAM. And we wanna strengthen that to all areas of the city.
Great, okay. We have another question over here, but Ryan, you're closer, so just hand him the mic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Phil Menendez. I was born and raised and still live in South City, plan on for the rest of my life if I could, depending on how the crime gets and the neighborhoods it been getting. I've been retired as a city police officer, as a sergeant for 23 years. So my questions are today, I was kinda, first of all, Mr. Griffin, I'd like to apologize on what happened to you and your daughter. It's quite embarrassing, disgusting that that happened here in our city and then going downtown and also becoming a victim twice with our attorneys. It shouldn't have happened. I'm all about educating. I'm all about, even when I was a police officer, we rode the beat, we got out, we talked to the kids, went to the schools. I'm all about getting them at that time or even as juveniles and young adults. I'm all about getting the low-level criminal help. And especially with the heroin addiction now, it's one of the worst drug you've ever seen. And we got kids and people we know dying every day. So I'm all about not sending them to the penitentiary, let's try to get them help. However, then it comes to the violent criminals, and it's revolving door. So let me just go with a couple scenarios that I know, okay, that, and then I'll end it with a question. But talk about the carjackings that occurred and the home invasions. There's two carjackings that occurred in South St. Louis within the last couple months. And the second district, our first district arrested it, the subjects in the car, in one of the cars that was taken in one of the two carjackings. They confessed. One of them had property from the second carjacking. Your office refused on him the first carjacking. You issued the second one just because he had property on him, not because there was a videotaped confession that he made that detailed all the stops and what they've done on the two carjackings. The other individual that didn't have property on him, both of those carjackings were refused on not enough evidence, because the victim couldn't ideal, because her face was covered. But still, there was still a confession. The third who was wanted by name later was the subject who violently, who robbed his friend, shooting him in the leg over in the 300 block, I believe, Walsh, where when he ran out with two pistols and could have killed those police officers that night, he was the third subject that was wanted. So if we'd have got all three of these and you would have held them accountable and all of them having histories on just the confessions and the property, you know, and just, then maybe the last incident wouldn't have occurred in the 300 block of Walsh. On April 1st, there was a car stolen from the Galleria. And we have these license plate readers that read stolen cars, robberies, burglaries, whatever they have on the real crime center, comes into our city. Our police officers get that car after pursuing it. That's a stolen car, subject in it with five stolen guns. He's back on the street. On the 7th, another stolen car comes to our city, another pursuit. Our officers have to use spike strips. All subjects, they leave the car. One of the individuals was the same guy that was just locked up with the five guns in the stolen car, not even a week ago. So if you guys, that also had a history. So on the violent criminals, I don't understand why you guys aren't holding them accountable and keeping them in jail.
Are you a sergeant right now?
I'm retired.
What's your name again?
Phil Menendez.
Okay, Phil Menendez, okay. Just wanna say thank you for your service, I appreciate that. So just to kinda tell you, and I'm not gonna go into specifics, I wanna get those cases that you're talking about so I can give you, but... No, but I'm gonna answer your question. But I want those specific cases you're talking about, because what we wanna talk about is, we're talking about balls and strikes. And I'm not addressing this to the sergeant, we're talking about balls and strikes. We prosecute thousands of cases, over 3,000 cases. And so when we wanna talk about a specific case that I can't have in front of me to tell you why that case was refused, that's not doing the community any justice and that's not really doing this conversation any justice. So I'm gonna ask that Mr. Khatib get that information so we can address that and I will let everybody know what happens. A lot of times when we talk about violent crime, we have to look at how police investigate. So I can talk about the police, and I'm not gonna point fingers because we all have to do our job. But we have to, we're basically the person that reviews evidence, okay? We have to review evidence on that individual circumstances. And most officers, we're gonna agree, disagree. I'm not gonna say we don't do some, make some decisions wrong. But at the same time, there's many different factors in why we would issue a case or refuse a case. And the number-one issue why we refuse a lot of cases right now is lack of evidence from police department. If I wanna give you, but a confession is more than just a confession. And I'm not gonna go into that individual case, and I respect what you're saying. But what we have to do is have to look at how we strengthen our cases from the initial arrest, how we strengthen the evidence that's presented to our case, because we require more evidence, which we've put this in place so we can review these serious cases quicker. But we need evidence, because we're under certain guidelines that we have to turn over faster under the Supreme Court rules and discovery rules. So we are requiring more evidence upfront. We're requiring all these different things that we can make that case and to move forward. So I'm not gonna say whether the officer is wrong or right, but I will review that individual cases. So please give that to Mr. Khatib Wahid.
I just have one thing to continue on, right? When you're saying violent offenders, I get that too, with drug dealers and drug users are two separate people. And that's what hurts our community, the drug dealers. Now, if you have 80 grams of marijuana, which is a large ziplock bag with a pistol, that's different than the guy with a little sack of marijuana that you say that is gonna make a thing go here eventually for possession in Missouri. Now, you were up there, you said that your colleagues were gonna let the gun laws go crazy. Now, you are in a position right now by yourself as our head prosecutor of the city, to hold these people accountable, show how violent this city is to show Jefferson City on what you were talking about then or back then. So you're standing up and you're doing seamless if you're right on protecting us, regardless of what, putting a part of your mob, regardless of how the guns are supposed to be, they are ready for hearing the city's statements.
But we're not focusing on drug dealers when we talk about the 100 grams or less. As you know, that's a possession case. That's not a distribution case. So we're not talking about a drug dealer cases. So I just wanna say, let's get that information. I'm not gonna bore this community with these issues because these issues are bigger than 100 grams or less. Because tell me, what is that person gonna get? And it's important, it's important, but it's about crime drivers. So you think the murder versus somebody possesses 80 grams is more important?
As he said, I said, he with pistols.
Those are not the cases we're focusing on. Those are not the cases we focus on. So those, that's, single, single possession cases, that's what I said, I didn't say...
When you talk about evidence, what about a surveillance? Like in my case, they had 12 ATVs surrounded me for a block. It's all on surveillance. I feared for my life, I couldn't do nothing. They had me stopped, then he starts shooting. He shot me two foot from my window, you know? They arrested him for his assault, let him out.
Sir, thank you so much, they knew everyone who asked questions. We've got at least two more over on this side. Ryan, it's your turn, so we're gonna take the next question, Ms. Gardner.
No, we're just driving down, really, down B-Brown.
But we don't discuss open cases in the public, that's why, but ask...
But they wouldn't discuss it at the courthouse either!
So please, can I...
Yeah!
Wait, 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 no, we're not doing this.
No, no. I pay taxes in the city, 'cause I work there all the time.
You don't understand what I'm saying.
I'm saying to you... If I come tomorrow, where you see my case, okay, I'll be here. What time do you guys open?
I'm trying to tell you that I came over and...
I tried to call Mike for a month and he won't answer my calls.
Sir, sir.
Would you mind just talking to that after the meeting?
Okay, I'll talk to you guys.
Could you, Khatib, would you dedicate some time after the meeting to talk to the members?
I would, that's what I'm trying to say.
If you guys don't mind talking to them after the meeting, we appreciate that.
If you want to get answers, we can get with you afterwards.
Yeah, thank you, thank you all very much. And this is really important, this is why we're here. We wanna have these kinds of conversations and really get these issues out. Khatib will be here after the meeting, so please make sure that you get the office hours and information. I know you've got the cards. And have some more dialogue about those sensitive cases in detail and find the time to learn more. But Ryan, I know you've got some more questions over there.
Hi, thank you for coming. First of all, I wasn't gonna say this, but I will say that I've known many police officers and prosecutors and lawyers in my 60 years of living in the city. And I have also heard these stories, as Officer Menendez says, and as Mr. Griffin. Do I have that correct? Nah, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, that's your name, anyway, is what you're saying. And I've heard, I've heard many stories of things that aren't getting followed up on. And that's very concerning to me. I'm also concerned for the victims. I'm hearing a lot of what we're doing for the criminal. But in my opinion, what is more important is the innocent victim. And when these people are released back into our society who have committed any kind of crime with a weapon, especially a gun, and they are put back, months, they're put on probation, they're months or just a year later, very dangerous for all of us that aren't committing crimes, that are good citizens, which is the vast majority. Those are the people who are really being, really ignored and they are being done wrong against. I'm sorry that they're young kids and most of them come from horrible families. I spent 20 years at Children's Hospital, I saw these families. It's sad. We don't take the kids away and the families are god-awful and the parents aren't held responsible. And then we say, "Oh, the poor kid." No, the poor victim of the kid. And we have to start doing something to get these kids off the streets for no other reason than safety of the community. And that, to me, means long jail sentences if you use a gun. I don't even care if you shoot it. If you do a carjacking and you put a gun on someone and you get caught in that car with your gun, you go away for 20 years. Out of society, safety for all of us. And I've also been told that, okay, 30, make it 30 years. Whatever's the safest way, make them sold, they can't hurt anybody anymore. And secondly, I want to see something done about more prosecutions. I have a friend who's a lawyer, I believe is a reliable source, said roughly 40% are not going to prosecution. There's evidence, there's charges, and then they get dropped. I would like that addressed. I don't know why that's happening, but it sort of ties into what these two gentlemen have said. And lastly, I know that Louis Reed Alderman, President, is pushing ceasefire. And that sounds like it's a little more of a formal way to get these criminals off our streets. Where are you on working with ceasefire? And I'm sorry, I went a little longer than I thought, but, thank you.
Well, I just wanna clarify some of the things. No, what I'm talking about, when I talk about harm reduction and public safety, that is not sacrificing victims of crime at all. That's actually looking at and focusing on victims of crime. We talk about strengthening our victim services outreach to give that victim the outreach they need as well as witnesses that are crucial to holding individuals accountable who commit those violent crimes. But when I talk about our data and what we looked at with our data, the number-one reason of we can't go forward on a case is lack of evidence brought over from the police department. The second reason is victims fail to want to participate. Because they're afraid of the system, they're afraid of the process. And when I hear about what people heard, and I'm just gonna put this out here, to say that somehow this prosecutor right here, who, when you talk about victims of violent crime in the city of St. Louis, those individuals look just like me. And also perpetrators of crime look just like me. So someone who's lived in North City all her life, who lived in these areas that we talk about violent crime, seeing crime, I am adamant that I'm not sacrificing a victim, I'm not sacrificing public safety for anybody. It's about accountability and it's about making us safe. And if we think always having a hammer to address crime is the solution, then guess what? We should be the safest city in America right now. Because you can ask Sergeant Menendez over there here, we have prosecuted and we have policed a lot of people and we have put them in the system. And guess what? We're still not safe. And that is not sacrificing what I'm talking about victims. This is about victims. This is about building trust when the people you're talking about don't wanna be a part of the system. This is about individuals who are afraid because of retaliation. That's why I have went to Jeff City to make sure we put protections. Because right now, do you know what the Supreme Court did? They made sure that you can have your address, your social security number, your date of birth turned over to the defendant and the defense. And you wanna know why we can't hold people accountable, 'cause people are afraid. And so when we have these conversations about crime and somehow we're not, we're gonna sacrifice crime, because I'm talking about alternatives... going to sacrifice crime because I'm talking about alternatives, actually, that next victim are those participants, or that next defendant that we're trying to identify so we can keep them from becoming, going into your house, going into your cars, because we're trying to stop the cycle of victimization so we don't have to deal with that next case. We're trying to prevent that most critical incident by deploying our services early, working with the police department. We have a prosecutor in the community that goes to the hospital, does these things, work with police to strengthen our cases. So it's not just this one size fits all type of approach I'm talking about. We're being smart on crime. We're not lacking the victim and making us less safe. This makes us safe. And if you look at other jurisdictions that have done this, crime has gone down a lot. And crime is going down here. Now, is it enough? No, it's not. Are we going to do more? We are. We're working to strengthen, working with intel so we can, one, get information. So, you know, one of the things I asked the police department, what's the top most fifty dangerous individuals in this city? Guess what? I haven't received it yet. Because we need to focus on those crime drivers. So we can continue, and look, I understand, we got to address violent crime. What I'm talking about is not taking away from violent crime. It's actually saying, let's not focus on these low-level offenders the same way, but let's focus on those crime drivers so I can send that person away for a long time. So I can get that victim to participate because they're afraid. So I can make sure we have policies in place so we can, one, make this retaliation, which right now, a victim doesn't want to participate because guess what? The defendant gets their address, do you think they're going to participate when they know where you live at? Want to know your phone number? And that's a good question. We also look at Facebook. We also monitor that stuff. So we're doing those things.
This guy that shot me, I'm a union man, he works on my job sites. He hasn't particularly been on my site with the company he works for, because we're general contractors, they're on our sites all the time. So what happens if I run into this guy? I'm fifty-five years old, I've never carried a gun until two months ago. Now I'm afraid to go anywhere without a gun. Because everybody else has them.
Thank you again, sir, and everyone, for these questions. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I feel like right now, we're at about fifteen minutes left, and we have a lot of hands raised. So I'm going to ask everyone to please ask your question. Let's stay away from the emotional descriptions and introductions, and just let's have some rapid-fire questions. Ask your questions. Ms. Gardner, please answer as quickly as possible, and we'll try to get as many in as we can before we break and discuss afterwards.
Good evening. Attorney Gardner, thank you for being here this evening. I just wanted to stand and say, I really don't have a question. I just want you to know how much I admire you. I feel that you give our city a lot of hope that we haven't had in a long time when it comes to prosecuting just crimes in the city, period. My family is a victim of a horrible crime that happened a couple of years ago. And, you know, when you lose a loved one, that's trauma, and you never really fully recover from that. But the one thing that I can say is that I don't harbor deep-seated issues against the perpetrator. Because you're correct, being a victim or a witness, you're not always able to participate in the different programs. But the one thing that I've found a lot of comfort in is your office. Because they reached out to us before the police would even sit down and meet with us. And I had the evidence, and I had people that said they saw who the person was, and it was just a lot of details. And I don't want to talk about anything personal, it's been resolved. But the one thing that I will say, I'm an educator by heart. I played imaginary school when I was a kid, and I know how important education is. And I came here tonight just to make sure that I was here. I was born and raised in the city. I got St. Louis public school education, and I'm very proud of my roots. The one thing that I will have to say is that our school system is failing a lot of our children. And I know that there are, and I know that there are a lot of people that feel like, oh, well, what about the parents? What about the parents? But when you have systemic generational curses that happen within families, you can't always go to the parent, because the parent don't have an education either. You don't have to pass a test to have a baby. So in our schools, we're lacking. And so I had to look at myself, because I'm an educator. What am I doing to reach that one kid that may be stealing everybody's cell phone in the school, maybe taking teachers' purses and taking their money? They don't wake up at eighteen and twenty-one years old and say, I think I'm going to steal me a car. It happens long before then. But we ignore the signs. And so what I will say is, as a community member, I'm not, you know, proclaiming any community group. I just do what I know I'm able to do, and I admire you. You give our city a lot of hope, because you're not just talking about the consequences and the punitive damage that we can do to a victim, but you're looking at that person as a whole, holistic, the brain, and helping them reprogram their mind to think things differently. Because when we vote no to increase our bond issues for the school, we're voting yes for crime. When they take programs out of our schools, that gives our children free range in the afternoon to break into your homes, to steal your cars, to steal in the stores, because there is no place for them to go. And so we may be able to afford to send our children to private schools, but the uneducated parents who were saying, well, what about his mother? Where is his father? They don't have the means to do so. So when we're voting no to increase taxes, and when we don't choose to spend an hour in the school reading to children who are not able to read, we are increasing the crime rate, and we don't even know it. When we're putting up cameras and spending fifty and sixty thousand dollars to put up a camera to patrol some stuff, that money could go into improving a child's life. And that's just one of the things that I feel that we can all do. So Kim, I'm not going to ask you, what are you going to do to decrease crime? I'm not going to talk to anyone to find out what you're going to do to decrease crime. We have to look within ourselves, and we have to ask that million-dollar question. What have I done to decrease crime in the life of a child that still has a chance to live? Because once they go to jail, we only build more jails. Once they go to jail, we don't teach them how to read, and your tax dollars take care of them, and we cry about taxes. So what I will say to you, Kim, like I said before, you give this city a lot of hope. Because I hear you talking about trauma, and I hear you talking about how your cognitive therapy programs that you're doing with children. I see you out handing out Thanksgiving baskets to those that have been disenfranchised and cheated out of their education when they were children, and now they don't have the means to get a job. It's systemic. And I feel like we all play a role in it. We all have contributed to it. And now it's time for us to roll up our sleeves, and in our community groups, instead of us talking about the haves and the have-nots, we got to roll up our sleeves and get busy. Take on a child. That's the goal.
Thank you.
Yeah, my question is related to partnership and leadership, so I appreciate everything you've said about diversion and alternate sentencing, and I think by and large, everybody in this room probably feels the same way. A couple of months ago, Louis Reed mentioned it, the ceasefire. So let's forget the programs, because they're all very, very similar, whichever you go, and most of everything that you said are in those programs as well. Then a couple of months ago, down at Peabody, I heard Jimmy Edwards say the same thing. Then I've heard the chief say the same thing as well. So you all sound like you're saying the same thing. But I was, the leadership portion of my question is related to the mayor. The mayor, you three are the most responsible, three people I mentioned, without Louis Reed, for the safety and also the alternate sentencing, whatever programs you put in place that I think we all support. So where is that leadership? Have you met with the mayor? Has the mayor brought everybody into the office? And then I keep on hearing, and I believe you, that by and large, you guys are all in sync to the most part. There's noise, there's media and that type of stuff as well. But how many meetings have you had with all three of you sitting down, looking at announcing a program? I haven't seen any of that. I haven't seen anything from the mayor. So has that occurred? Or is it in private meetings? Or are you guys going to do that? Because that's what you were meant as, from the mayor down to the three people that own the partnership to keep us safe.
Well, that's good, and I'm sorry, I need to answer that about the ceasefire. You know, I do support the ceasefire program, but like any programs, we need to talk, I've talked to President of the Board of Aldermen before he announced ceasefire, kind of the pros and cons, and I'm supportive of, one, let's get together, as well as work with the chief. How do we implement this program within our city? Because when you look to other programs, you have to look at how that program can be effective, and a lot of things we're doing. So, you know, I know the ceasefire has the violence interrupters. Right now, we have a piece of that that we can strengthen, as well as we have targeted policing, which we're working on with non-fatal shootings. So we would love to have funds, which we're going to ask the mayor and the E&amp;A board to fund programs to address crime drivers. So I don't want to call it the ceasefire, but we are asking for resources in our budget to address, how do we engage that infrastructure that is needed to have a ceasefire? As well as working with law enforcement, working with the chief, working with the public safety director in terms of bringing the intervention and compliance unit to our office. We work with them right now. We want to strengthen that partnership. So we're in the works, talking to Lieutenant Colonel Ronnie Robinson, who, he started that gang intervention, the Gang Violence Task Force, and he was on the forefront of, before ceasefire, to address gang violence. So I talk to him daily about how we can present and bring resources, but of course, we got to continue to get the buy-in, and we want to present a plan to the community, and I think that that's where we're at the stage, we're still talking amongst each other, and then we're going to ask for resources. And so, and we also want to have a grant, and that's what we're trying to work on, what grant opportunities are out there, as well as city resources that can be matched. So I look forward to sitting down and talking to the mayor, and talking further with the President of the Board of Aldermen. But we have to sit down and create what we're doing and how we strengthen those partnerships, and that's what we're doing right now.
So what I'm hearing is that Mayor's got to sit down and partner with all of the three groups, which that's kind of an expectation, you know, obviously. And then the other portion of that is, is it sounds like we got to break the partnership. ICU's in, in your office, you guys are talking all the time.
We want it further in office, we want to bring the passion in our office.
It's getting better with that. Also, the police are not providing as much evidence. I mean, before we were providing evidence, the police was providing evidence, and we had a lot of convictions with that evidence. So the partnership also needs to extend what is expected of the police department, because what I heard is that recently, that the amount of evidence just isn't what it used to be and what we were able to prosecute before. So with that partnership, you're going to ask for what you need as well to have successful...
Well, before that, before this partnership, we've looked at addressing how we bring in evidence with the police department, and they've agreed to work on their procedures and policies to address our new issues in terms of what we have to turn over upfront. So we've already addressed that, and we're working to continue to make sure we can have more evidence up front, and we're doing a good job of that partnership. But it takes time, because there's many systems in terms of what we need now that we have to turn over for a case. So we're working well with the police department on that issue.
How y'all doing today? My name is Darren Seals, I'm CEO of Sancofa. Let me say this, you all. Twenty years ago, I sat in a room just like this. The same conversation. Only way we going to get together and change this, we have to go to the youth. Ten years ago, fifteen years ago, them fathers that you say sent away for thirty years, who's raising them babies? So when you see these little kids running around on streets, I got an eleven-year-old that I mentor, smoked crack. Father dead, mother prostitute. How do we help that kid? Just imagine, you going to lock him up for thirty years? It's going to keep, it's doing this, you all? It's a cycle, and it got to stop. What Ms. Gardner is doing is the best thing that I ever seen in my life. And I can say this, you all, those that don't believe it, I've been shot thirteen times, four incidents, and each guy that shot me did not one day in jail, twenty years ago. It made me get off into my neighborhood, it made me get off into my neighborhood and ask every drug dealer, everybody over there, please stop, because I got a two-year-old that's going to walk through this path. Thirty years, and I might be dead and gone. But what about our grandbabies? That's what we need to start working on. What about them grandbabies? Them unborn child is not here. I understand, no disrespect. Hey, everybody that went through it, I know your pain, but you sleeping, wake up at night, I go through the same thing. But let's get together as a whole, black, white, green, Chinese, let's just make it happen. That's not cheap, cheap, trying to clean up something that, the problem was twenty years We going, we going to get it, but let's do this, you all. I'm willing to work with, if you got, if you got something in your neighborhood that's bad, I'm willing to come down on the block and talk to these guys. I go up in dope houses, to the worst of the worst, and I'm not offering, because if God got this plan for me, I'm ready. But let's see who else, let's see who else is going to write down the number and say, let's team up, and let's go in these neighborhoods. Every little kid just wants something to do. In my neighborhood, there's not one community center. Nothing. So what you think these kids going to do? They going to find something to do. Now since they coming south and in the county, oh, it's a problem. It's been going on in my neighborhood for thirty years. I was part of the problem, now I'm part of the solution. Let's just get together, you all, and make it happen. Let's stop talking. She doing the best she can, I see it every day. When I say every day, you all, every day, I've never seen a lady that's saying, find out what's going on with his mom. What's going on with the dad? I spoke up in Northwest the other day and asked all the boys, forty-five boys, who got their father in their life? Two of them raised their hand. Something, something got to be wrong with that. If you all don't feel it, come on, we got to come together and make it happen, y'all. Ms. Gardner, tip my hat off to you. I'm riding with you.
Couple more questions.
My name is Danny Granberry. I'm an ex-offender, not a violent offender. Ms. Gardner, she's not a magician. You can't stop a person from doing something, you can only make a reconful after they do it. It's a mindset. I come out of prison, went to the force parks, became a funeral director. I have no fucked-up thoughts. I'm a member of the Democratic Party, I'm a member of the show. So it's a mindset. So it's not what she's doing at the prosecutor, what the police is doing. Like the gentleman said, we have to get those kids and try to stir them away. Going to prison, if they go for thirty years and they come out, you got that same mentality. Ain't nothing magical going to happen. They going to be worse, they going to be mad because they did thirty years, they didn't have no potato chips while they did the sentence. So let's get together, find solutions that work, support people who are trying to get the attention of these people, and do it like that, otherwise it ain't going to work. I'm taking from experience.
I just want to thank God for Kim Gardner, because she is doing something that has never been done for, 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 for people in general, you know? Now, the reason why I'm saying it is this. I was sitting here, and I wasn't going to say nothing, but all I keep hearing is jail, prison, prison, prison. Well, I'm here to give y'all hope, and I just want to say this. I grew up with my mother and my father, they'd been married for fifty-some years, and my father been, over been, over been, over been, over been working and taking care of us all his life. He, he was very strict, he was very, he showed us how to be a man. But we chose a wrong direction, which is the streets. And I'm a living witness. I did fifteen years in prison, I just got out in two thousand and fifteen. And I'm saying that to say this, I'm not trying to brag on it, but I just want to give y'all some hope. My name is Minister Tony. I did fifteen years in prison. I once was that little boy who was, who was selling drugs, using drugs, stealing cars. I did fifteen years for a home invasion. Me and my brother committed a crime that I regret, you know what I'm saying? And I'm saying that to say this. Prison is not the answer to the solution of this world. This world has a condition that it going to take the power of God to change. You got to change the way you think. Now, I was young, and I went to prison, and I did all these evil things. things, and I thank God that I changed. It wasn't because I went to prison. I changed the way I think because I gave my life to God. It took God. It's going to take prayer to change our neighborhoods, and men like Brother Darren Seals and all the other, all the other, uh, all the other youth organizations. So, uh, me and my wife been blessed with a street ministry called Hand Ministry. And that stands for Help a Neighborhood, Help a Neighborhood, uh, to develop successfully. That's Hand Ministry. And I thank God that I came out the streets. So you cannot say, put these kids in prison. Now, I'm not against prison, because if you, if you commit a crime, then, okay. But I appreciate the things that Ms. Gardner is doing. That's a blessing from God, because she's not just saying, you committed crime, do your time. We got to do a prevention. We got to catch them before they commit their act. Everybody has to be a big brother, just like God told Cain and Abel. He said, you got to be your brother's keeper. And you got, it got to start with us. It take a village. You know what I'm saying? The surveillance cameras ain't nothing. You all been blessed with a natural gift called eyes. We see everything. This is our surveillance. We got to watch out for each other. You know what I'm saying? Prison ain't going to change nothing, because guess what? A person could go, a person can go to prison for 15 years and come out and pick up a gun, the drugs, anything. You, you have to get hold of that man and change the way he think. You got to, you got to give him some tools to build himself. You know what I'm saying? They study building buildings. We got to build people. And that's the ministry that God blessed us with. We building people.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We did have one other question in the front. We're right on time. So, okay, we'll take one more question, and then we'll wrap things up.
I'd first like to commend you, Kim, for, I remember when you were running. You came to each and every house in my neighborhood. And I went to the door, because I said, who is this? And what kind of change are you going to make? You have done every single thing that we talked about for about 15 minutes. You took the time to just talk to me alone. Everybody in the neighborhood talked to you, but 15 minutes just with me. And I commend you with all these personal accusations that are accosted towards you. I commend you for standing up as a lady. I'd like to also piggyback on what the young man back there said about the fact that we, for 20 years, we've been talking about this foolishness. Ronnie and the gang unit, 15 years ago, they had a gang unit in the police department that he was head of, making super progress. Funding was cut. Funding was cut. He was in the schools. He knew those kids' names. His whole unit knew everyone. Cut. And I'd also like to commend what you said about getting into those classrooms, those early classrooms. We talk about, oh, the St. Louis public schools are not doing this, they're not doing that. What have you done to get in there to help? What have you done? I'm a former educator, and from the St. Louis public schools. I'm retired. I want to know, what have you done? We want to talk a lot of foolishness. And that's all we do is duh-duh-duh-duh-duh-duh-duh. Let's have some action. And that's why I'm with you 100%. Action.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
More comments? So I will say, we are right, we are right at time right now, just a little bit over. Thank you all so very much for coming tonight, for sharing your personal commentary and stories, and to Ms. Gardner and Khatib for being here and being available. We do have sign-in sheets, so I would encourage everyone to make sure that you have your email and information, because we'll be sending follow-up with the group here. I mean, I can speak on behalf of the Shaw Neighborhood Ownership Model. It's something that we are very proud of in the Shaw Neighborhood, to have a structure that supports working with our offices and working with the community to really build relationships, and not just shuffle crime from one place to another, but to really reduce the ripple effect of crime across the neighborhood. So I wanted to just provide that last-minute wrap-up, because people are starting to shuffle out the door. But I want to thank you again on behalf of the NOM, on behalf of our organizing institutions, and to thank Dave Gibson for giving us this beautiful space this evening. Thank you all for coming. Ms. Gardner, did you want to, did you want to do a closing remark? And then we'll have just a little bit of time to mingle as we walk out this evening.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. Thank you to the Shaw Neighborhood Organization, NOM, because you guys, you know, really make it easier for me to do my job, as well as work with the community. I look forward to continuing this dialogue. And I thank you for your concerns and criticisms, because that's what makes us better. So I thank you, and I appreciate you. Thank you.